To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody. Welcome to the Cato Township Planning Commission meeting. If you all did, I mean, I think everybody's got an agenda there, so, uh, member attendance, I think everybody's here except for Dave Turnwell, and, uh, I think he'll be here in a few minutes, so, we're gonna proceed. I don't know if everybody's looked over the agenda for tonight. There is one thing I would like to add. Down towards the bottom there, before public comments, I'd like to add the, uh, twenty twenty-four meeting schedule. Take a few seconds to talk about that, so. No other additions or adjustments? If I can get a motion.
I'll make that motion that we approve the agenda with the changes adding the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule.
Discussion? Any support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. First of all, I'd like to welcome Jake Cummings. And Jake, if I could swear you in. You can raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'll be, I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And that I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the Cato Township Planning Commission.
Of the office of the Cato Township Planning Commission.
In Macon County?
In Macon County.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome. Congratulations. Public comments. We have public comments on the agenda twice. Reason for the first public comments is for agenda items only. Say your name.
My name's Marco Velelo. And, uh, I'm here because I purchased a piece of property recently in the township. And before I purchased it, I spoke with Larry Gilbert. He told me what I planned to do would've been okay. But I got, uh, everything in line that he told me to do, called again, found out he's not supervisor anymore, and what he was telling me was wrong. The law, or the rules here, yeah, won't allow me to do it. So that's why I'm here. I want to get that rule changed.
Thank you.
Thank you pretty much for the, about the same thing. My name is John Briggs. We own a eighty-acre parcel out here in section seven. And, uh, we would like to take one acre of that that has a house and a small barn on it and give to my daughter and my son-in-law. And they don't, and I, I appreciate the, the land preservative act and whatever, the rules for it. But, uh, we would like to take that house and one acre from that eighty-acre parcel and give it to my son-in-law and my daughter. And, uh, it's being said that now I have to take and give five acres. To me, to do that is, is taking that rule to preserve the farmland and then taking four acres that we don't want to take out of there and, and take it out of farmland. And, and what we're saying is that that rule kind of contradicts itself, uh, in a sense like that when you just want to take one acre that already has a house and a barn on it that's not farmable and, and take four good acres of farmland and have to add to it just to, to make that, that split. And I, we're in the same situation. We would like to see that rule changed to work. You could pull an acre off if it has a dwelling on it. And, uh, even to the fact that, like, sixty years ago, my in-laws give us that acre of ground. And I, I feel that anybody that wants to give their child an acre of ground should be able to do that so that they can get started in life. And that's what we did. And we appreciate that.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
You there? Yes?
David Rasmussen. Have a hundred and six, hundred and ninety acres out, just outside of town. I'd like to put a trailer in for my sister-in-law. There's septic there, the water's there, 'cause, uh, she's handicapped, she's seventy-four years old. And you, you guys said we cannot. Wondering why we cannot put a trailer in there for her? Instead of, uh, going someplace else.
Any other comments? Uh, closed public comments. I think, uh, you all have a, a copy of the, uh, May twenty twenty-three meeting minutes? And if I can get the, um, motion to approve those minutes to make them official?
The only thing I noticed on them is the date for this meeting were the twelfth at that time, and now the do you want to make a change to that, or just leave it as is?
That's the other angle that, I mean, they have those minutes, so.
Yep.
Do you really have to?
Yep.
Except these two?
Yeah, we should. Yeah. So.
You can explain all of that.
Yeah, um. We did have a meeting scheduled for July twelfth, so I guess we can leave that as is, because it didn't.
It got changed after the fact, okay.
It did, it did. We didn't discuss it in, um, that meeting. Um, so it was in the meeting notes, but, um, I know Dave did show up for that meeting. And, um, nobody showed. Um, we did schedule another meeting for the nineteenth because, um, I know I wasn't able to attend that meeting, so, um, and, uh, 'cause we didn't want to miss a meeting, so, um, and we're all here tonight for that meeting, so, uh, and, and we posted that as an entire period according to the rules and laws and so on and so forth, so, but. No, I think we're good. Any other discussion? If I can get a motion then?
I'll make a motion that we approve the last meeting minutes, make them official.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Um, next is, uh.
We're in part of the record?
Yeah, we should. I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for July twelfth if Dave Turnwell was present. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carried. And then I just want you to sign that, Dave, put that there. Is there any report? Jake?
For, um, the month of May, there was, uh, Elwin and North County Line Road, I have a tax, I can't remember, but they put a pole barn on there, there's no dwell, uh, no address. And on, uh, one zero one eight-two Tamarack Road, they put a swimming pool in. At one one two nine-five M forty-six, they put a pole barn in. At one zero nine eight-five North Lakeview Road, uh, fourteen by eleven Home Edition. And then on sixty-five fifty-one Schmid Road, uh, Home Edition. And I'm sorry, but I didn't bring, uh, uh, June's report, I'll bring it next, um. Next week, or next month, yeah.
Any else?
Uh, that's it.
To the public comment on David Rasmussen, um, did, did he have a permit?
David Rasmussen for?
A mobile home?
Oh, for this one here, or for which one was that?
No, it's the public comment that was just made by, by David. Did he, did he have a, uh, did he apply for a permit to put a mobile home?
Okay, what, what did you, uh, ask for?
We called up and asked about putting a mobile home in, in her yard.
Okay.
And you said, no, you cannot put a mobile home in.
Okay, because?
You just said you don't allow putting mobile homes in.
That's not true.
That's not true. We have an ordinance that just.
Yeah, you can, as long as it meets the guidelines, it's gotta be at least so many feet wide and so many square feet.
So, I, I guess what I would do, Dave, is, is, um, is get a hold.
It's gotta be at least twenty feet wide.
I get ahold of Dave Kelsey, maybe later tonight, tomorrow, um, and walk through that with him.
It's gotta be so wide and so long. 'Cause there was a trailer house there for my grandmother. The septic's there, the water's there.
Understood, but there's certain guidelines, if you go into ordinance, I don't know if you looked at the ordinance?
Uh, it's gotta be just about like a modular home then, a twenty-foot. It can't be the ten or twelve. It's gotta be twenty.
Correct. Unless a person applied for variance and it's not guaranteed, the zoning board of appeals would, uh, approve it. There's no guarantee, they may, they may not, and, uh, the money's not refundable, and, uh, what is it, variance is, uh, two hundred dollars, so you, regardless of what their determination is on it, you wouldn't get the money back.
So I, I mean, I, obviously, I, I mean, if you looked at the ordinance, then so, so be it. I think it's, uh, section six, it talks about, um, residential, um, and, and specifically it gets into mobile homes, mobile parks. So if you looked at that, I mean, there's certain guidelines there. Uh, it all even talks about if you've had one in the past and it, it has to be updated, and there's certain rules when it comes to that, guidelines. So, and I get ahold of Dave, I guess, to follow through with that.
Okay.
Just to answer your question. I didn't see a permit that you applied for one.
Well, you never did, 'cause we called, yeah, all day, and he said you cannot put a mobile home in.
Or one that size?
Yeah.
What size did you ask for?
A standard mobile home to put in there, she's all by herself, seventy-four years old.
Which is probably a sixteen by eight, or eighteen by seventy, or something like that.
Yeah.
That's a standard single-wide home, twenty foot's not even a single-wide width.
I don't know, I mean.
How a single-wide, I don't know.
I don't want to get into the discussion too deep here, but I'm just saying, I don't see a permit out there, so, um, and that's why I just asked you, Dave, about it, so.
We'd ask, put in the permit, then you make up your mind. Correct.
Well, I mean, if you, if you want to install or put one there, you, you have to have a permit to put it there in the first place. So, 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 yeah, I mean, you can look online in the ordinances on chapter six, and it walks right through the guidelines. And if they meet all those guidelines, then I'm not sure what the issue's gonna be.
The issue?
If the issue, obviously, well, we can take this up after the meeting, maybe, but I'm just saying, I don't want to get caught on this too much, 'cause we have other things on the agenda.
Yes.
But I, I, I just, I was just asking Dave a question about it, and a twenty-foot question, so, but, we can take it all fly, so. Any else, Dave?
No, not with that.
Were these on record, Dave?
Um, approved with the pay raise, through all members sitting on, planning commission. Recording secretary is on our agenda, so I won't go over there about getting, we, we approved it, but, I mean, the board has to still make the vote. And then, um, we approved, I was in Jacob's, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, old business. Any else? I'm sorry?
No, please.
Okay. Uh, number nine there, old business, master plan update?
The only out with security system is approved and installed, I mean. Security and surround, no, the projector, we're still, I think next meeting we're gonna talk about the projector, so.
Do we have to have a, I mean, is there, the cameras are over already, here they are, right there's one.
There's one right behind you.
There's one there, one down the hallway, and I think that's too outside.
Okay. So will they be there for recording your meetings in too?
They're supposed to be recording right now.
Okay. Very good. Good then?
Yep.
Uh, old business, um, first on the agenda there is master plan update, Danielle?
Yeah.
And y'all got a copy of the, um, note she sent there, so, very good. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so just to kind of catch you guys up on the work that's been done since we spoke last, um, and then kind of what's, what's come here soon. First of which, project status, where we're at. As you guys can see, um, put some work into the future land use draft, so this is essentially the first pass at what the future land use plan is going to look like. Um, the last meeting that we spoke in May, um, we went over, and, and even prior to that, we went over, um, existing conditions, and, um, so like, essentially, the first half of the plan is, is complete, that goes over demographics, existing conditions, existing land uses, transportation system, uh, natural features and so forth. Um, since then, um, as you guys likely recall, there was an online survey of which we received eighty-five responses. Um, and then there was also a public open house, which I would say roughly about, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five people probably came to that. Um, so the full, uh, breakdown and, and report of those results, um, are included in your packet. And I don't plan to go in, into those, um, really in detail unless anyone has any questions, um, at this time, knowing that you guys have quite a bit of business to get to this evening. So for the future land use draft, um, included in your packet is the first of the, uh, future land use map. The dark green there, uh, signifies areas that are planned to be agricultural. So the methodology behind that is essentially, I took areas that are, uh, deemed as prime farmland in the township, as well as areas that are currently zoned for ag, um, and areas that are directly adjacent to those, um, that have not been defined for, um, any growth opportunities and kind of just kept those as ag or rural residential. So, of course, the, the majority, the vast majority of the township is going to remain ag and rural residential land uses. So agricultural land uses, um, may include, uh, both active farmland as well as, like, single-family residential. Located in on large lots, that might also include hobby farming, or folks that might have, you know, uh, goats on their, on their yard, but, uh, may not be like active farm or have livestock that they have for, um, their, you know, business operation or financial needs or anything like that. So, you know, of course, that's very consistent with the character that you guys see in your township today. Um, oh, I should also note as well that, um, I would like to point out that there's a, there's a, a big difference between a future land use plan and a zoning, uh, map. The future land use map, what this does is that it sets the stage for any potential rezoning opportunities that the township might, um, embark on, or if the property owner comes to you with a rezoning request, this is the map that you would refer to when that rezoning, uh, across, uh, request comes across your desk. So this in no way goes through and, you know, rezones everybody's properties for them in, in any way, shape, or form. What this does is a policy, it acts as a policy guideline document for reference for you folks to, to go back and forth to, um, as needed when future development comes through, or, um, when rezoning requests come through, or if there's any infrastructure expansions, things like that. So the future land use map and the zoning map do relate to one another. And, um, when you get the full draft of the plan, you'll see how that works, but essentially, I'll include a table that says, here are the future land use designations, and here's how they relate to your current zoning. And then the, the draft will also include a full zoning plan in there that will basically have my recommendations for, um, changes to your zoning ordinance. Um, moving forward to rural residential, so that's going to be the, um, the lighter green color on the map, um, which is more in the northern part, um, of the township. So, again, this is signifying the large lot residential, which, um, is less intended for agricultural purposes or production purposes. Uh, but more for, you know, homes that are on, on several acres or more, um, that may have pole barns, accessory structures for, you know, RVs, boats, uh, that kind of stuff that you normally see in, um, in rural residential areas. Um, these roads are county roads and will remain as, as such, um, and basically, the character that currently exists is planned to carry forward in these areas. Uh, also, if anyone has any questions, please feel free to stop me and jump in. Um, so the next designation that I included here is, um, referred to as neighborhood residential. So this is a little bit different, um, but not entirely different than, than what your current, uh, zoning actually is. Um, so what happened was, you know, during this, uh, during the public engagement, um, component of this project, um, it was identified that, you know, some growth may occur outside of the village limits or, um, around where the, the lakes are located. So the, uh, neighborhood residential land uses, um, as you can, as I included an image here of kind, to kind of illustrate what this means. Um, but essentially, these are gonna be your smaller lot, um, neighborhoods that, you know, you have more, uh, it's higher density, but not as quite, not quite like you would see in a traditional, like, suburban setting, um, but more density than what you would see for rural residential. So these are going to be like your classic neighborhoods, maybe with sidewalks or streetlights and, um, and so forth. And the idea here is that, um, for, uh, any possible or potential utility expansions or expansions, um, out within the village limits, um, that this would kind of accommodate this type of, uh, residential development. Um, and it should also be noted, too, that there's an area, um, north of, um, Town Line Lake, um, that is designated for neighborhood residential, and, and that's largely because of the current fabric of, of what exists there with the smaller lot sizes and its already higher density, um, to just kind of, uh, as time moves to perhaps enhance, uh, enhance those areas with, um, any sidewalk infrastructure, should it be necessary, or, um, uh, municipal infrastructure, should that, uh, occur or arise. Um, appropriate land uses may also include any parks or public spaces, um, of the like, um, churches or, um, uh, and schools, um, township buildings, or, you know, uh, county buildings or, or something to that effect. Um, and the appropriate zoning districts are going to be your higher-density residential districts here. So I want to again emphasize that this is not saying we're going to rezone all of these parcels into a multifamily or something to that effect, it's just basically saying, in the event a rezoning occurs, or, um, to keep, to, uh, keep up with development and market trends within the township, these are areas that would be most appropriate for residential density that is of residential, you, land uses that is of higher density, rural residential and residential lots. Um, the next designation that is included in the future land use plan is lakefront residential. This was something that I recall we had talked about, um, in the past, in the beginning of this process, is, um, exploring the idea for opportunities to create a, um, new zoning district for lakefront residential properties. The purpose for that is kind of multifaceted, the first of which is that lakefront properties, as you guys well know, have a lot of different characteristics than the rest of the township. Um, they're typically narrow in size, they're typically smaller in size, um, the needs for those homes are quite a bit different than if you were to have a large lot where you can kind of, uh, have flexible, um, style of your house, so, um, just to, there are different considerations for lakefront residential homes. Some of those being setback considerations, um, front side and rear, um, building height limitations, so you're not building a, a large structure that gets in the way of your neighbor's view of the lake, um, municipal infrastructure and access, any expansions or hookups that may occur. Um, other considerations may include accessory structures, such as location of them, number of accessory structures, dimensions. Um, I would imagine that there are quite a few folks who maybe own a home on the lake with that, or a cottage on the lake, and then have, uh, pole barn across the street that they use to store their boat, you know, those kinds of considerations. Um, boat garages might be a thing, um, just, you know, an example of things that kind of differ lakefront, um, properties versus not lakefront properties. And then, of course, your, um, typical, like, environmental factors that go into that. So appropriate land uses here, um, essentially are just planned to be residential homes or, uh, part-time residential cottages. Um, other appropriate uses may include public spaces, um, such as parks or boat launches. The next one, uh, business enterprise. So this is going to be the, uh, the parcels that are, um, in red, or that, like, light red color, um, that are primarily located along the perimeter of the village, um, uh, village limits. So this one was kind of, the idea here is to have, uh, flexible commercial land uses. And what struck me when I was driving, um, especially along the, um, M forty-six, M forty-six, um, is that a lot of the commercial land uses there could kind, kind of teeter on the side of both being commercial and light industrial in character. Um, so the idea is to kind of, is to promote, uh, development, uh, and redevelopment flexibility to allow both, um, commercial and light industrial land uses. And then anything more intense than that would be subject to special land use, uh, criteria or approval. Because, uh, the, the, uh, appropriate land uses here might include office, or it might include any type of retail businesses. Um, like, and when I say retail, I mean, like, perhaps a, I don't know, a boat sales store or something like that. Um, or a used car lot or something. Light manufacturing, so the idea here is to focus more so on building and site design rather than what's in the building, provided that there are no big nuisance, uh, potential there. Any, any artisan production, food and beverage production, creative industries, warehousing, logistics, research and development, um, all of those kinds of things, general stores, uh, you know, corner stores, all of that would be appropriate within this district. Um, or this designation, I should say. Um, so these images here kind of illustrate some ideas there, that on the top image, you see a little bit more of like a small-town sort of cottagey feel, general store, which I think would fit very seamlessly in the township, um, especially along M forty-six. And then on the bottom, you see a little bit more of a, excuse me, light industrial, uh, sort of feel there, where it's kind of got like a artisan maker space sort of, um, character to it, but both of those buildings, um, would be, uh, appropriate, um, in these areas. Um, and then lastly is public, semi-public, so these are going to be all of your, um, current public spaces and any perhaps expansion of public spaces, so, um, that's going to be like parks, um, trails, community open space, any township, or even village buildings that are located in a township, any, any municipal or government-owned, um, lots, properties, or buildings would, uh, fit in, in, in this, uh, category. Or, or if it's like a, um, parks department, boat launch, or something that the government owns and operates, rather than like an HOA, which would fit more into the residential category. So that this, uh, future land use designation is kind of planned to encompass, uh, those areas, also includes schools, um, things like that, that are just probably going to be government-owned and operated, um, businesses and, and like, or not businesses, uh, sites, and likely not going to change, um, in that capacity. Um, so then I guess, uh, turning it to you guys, like, what do you, is this kind of on, on par with where you were thinking this would go? Um, I did take a lot of the, I, I use your, your current future land use plan and your current zoning and current conditions, um, as well as the, the feedback that we heard from the community to kind of create this first draft. And I'd also be happy as well to, like, kind of create more maps in the plan that sort of zoom in a little bit on the smaller lakefront properties, so you can see those a bit better. But keep in mind, too, that, um, the, the plan in its entirety will have an entire zoning chapter to it that will discuss how these relate to zoning a bit further.
Currently, I guess, as I look at Jake's book there, binder on the front of it, I mean, you can turn it, so I shouldn't see that, but all that red there is commercial today, but, I mean, and I know this is just preliminary, but it, it isn't as big on your map compared to what that map says.
And, and I would be happy to extend that, um.
I did hear what some of the public comments were, too, at, at, open house, some of that was a little bit of discussion, I guess, but.
Yeah, and, and the idea there was to make sure that there was, like, harmonious land uses. So I didn't want to have commercial areas kind of extend into where there might be, um, a difference, like, a, what am I trying to say? Like a stark difference between, like, this is where you have your rural residential, and this is where your commercial is. So the idea there was to kind of like. So the idea there was to kind of like have almost like a transcending effect, that you have your commercial where it's a bit higher density, a bit more intense than you have your neighborhoods where they're also a bit higher density. And then that trickles out into your rural residential, so you have kind of like a a sect there. Um, so that was the thought process behind that, but I would be happy to extend that to uh, closer match what your, what your zoning has and I I don't see a problem with that.
Okay. Anybody else?
Looking at her map, I think her map, her map is a little more accurate than what we actually have on the zone. Because that stretch along forty-six, there is from McDonald's to basically the church property, there is residential in there. There's quite a few homes in there. And then that continues all the way to basically from, I don't know, I remember the name of the road there by the Baptist Church, but to the next intersection, that's yeah, you've got the church, you've got DeWitt, you've got Burns, all, and so that is kind of accurately reflecting, I think, our.
I think it goes, I think it goes the other way though, too.
It goes where the Johnson Building, the electrical burns.
Yeah. It's actually showing that whole block, which that would be a little inaccurate because on the backside of DeWitt, there are residential homes as well.
Which ones?
Yeah.
Kind of like where. This is the only one right here. So there is the commercial, there's the one.
They just have that road, so we we, there there's always going to be a line, I get that.
Yeah, we we know, it's it's all, it's a discussion point, I mean, you made it clear to us. Yeah, we're talking about that, but.
Yeah, and and I'd be happy to, you know, of course, this is just the first draft, so there are definitely changes that can and should be made. Um, something that I did notice though, when I was going through everything, was that you guys have sep, I shouldn't say several, um, at least two zoning districts I know of that actually there are no properties within the township that are zoned those. One of which being the multifamily residential and the other being, um, I think you have a commercial district in there that, or I'm sorry, a sort of like a neighborhood commercial. I have it listed in here somewhere. Or I'm sorry.
Industrial, industrial in there?
RS. Oh, no, maybe that is, it's just difficult to read on this one.
Yes, R, suburban residential.
Mm-hmm. So it looks like, it appears there are several properties, probably. And then it's. Um, but point being is that that was something that I kind of noticed when I was going through this, that, you know, to be mindful of those things that, you know, just if something is designated as neighborhood residential, that doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be high-density apartments or duplexes or anything like that. It just basically says, yes, we recognize that this, these areas are likely going to be higher residential than your typical rural residential on large lots.